Good evening and welcome to the Town and Douglas Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, January 13th, 2022. Time is now 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is A and Rs, one White in Heights.
You have two's on the screen, but I don't mind kind of taking this one if it's okay with you. Corrective item for the lot that was a budding town property. zoning board issued a variance for the side setback that a budding town property did a week. So the final correction was the seven inch movement of this line on the other side. And this is the plan that indicates that.
Perfect.
Have the checklist here.
Okay.
It's all set.
Okay.
Just a review. This is really just to correct the lot line for performance and side setback on that.
Okay.
Common ownership, so there's no issue.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions on this? Everyone's familiar with the issue that was there? Yeah, Jude, we got it. I think you're all set.
I don't even know if that was them.
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to endorse.
So moved.
Motion made by Ernie.
Second.
Second by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consensus is good. Next item, we had a public hearing, continued pines, sand, and stone company applications for earth removal, special permit, water resource protection overlay district. We have a request to withdraw without prejudice. It was received January 3rd, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Mike Z., seconded by Jake. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Yep.
So moved.
Motion made by Ernie Marks to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron. All those in favor?
Aye.
As far as bookkeeping and stuff, Matt, that's all set, right? As far as the motions and stuff, so. Next item is too early, so Matt, did you want to start with anything?
Sure. The additional business item one is a signature for covenant for Peter Michael Business Park. We have a draft covenant that had been reviewed by Town Council and is available in the signature packet.
Okay.
Produced by the applicants, reviewed by council, and is ready for our signature. If the board wishes to execute the covenant, the signed my law plans are also here. Tom McEntire is here.
Hello.
Applicants, if there's any questions before we go ahead.
Board, do you have any questions?
No, it's been reviewed by council and by applicant.
Okay. Do you have anything?
I have, you decided one of them.
We have it, yeah.
Okay.
Someone already has a signature on it?
I have a signature on it. We'll take it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll talk about last.
Oh, okay, good. Okay. Whitein Reservoir Estates update?
Oh, we need a motion on both.
Oh, you need?
There'd be a motion to execute covenant and a motion to endorse the plan.
Did we, okay, so this was a definitive?
Yeah.
Okay.
We already approved.
Yeah. Oh, but we didn't, we didn't, I think I recused myself from this one anyway, so.
For that, for that public hearing, it's just customary for us to the motion to accept the covenant and then motion to then endorse the plan. It was a condition of approval that the covenant had to be drafted and executed prior to endorsement.
Oh, okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion to accept the covenant and endorse the plan.
So moved.
Motion made by Jake, seconded by Ernie. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll recuse myself for the record.
Before the meeting's over, before we all leave today, everything's there for signature. Do you want them to sign it now so you can take it with you?
Yeah.
That'd be good.
I have a notary. With the senior signature.
Wow.
Yeah, checking licenses?
I got one, I'm not sure how good it is, Jake.
I'm just playing.
Jake, you want? Possibly yes.
No, you wouldn't.
Have you raised your right hand?
Just precluded that we're on this board.
I'm also a notary.
Hey, you may find out that Aaron's license expired two years ago. No driver's license, no anything.
Yeah. Yeah. Charlie was expired in November. He just found out last week, yeah.
I have that little gold eagle on mine. What's it called? Kind of a license now, it's the real eye.
Real eye.
It's like star, not an eagle.
The other ones are all fake.
Can I have that pen back?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. While they're signing, do you want to give us an update for White in Heights?
White in Heights, we voted to release the final lots at our previous hearing. What's in our packet is the lot release document for signature.
Okay.
What we also learned is that when the board released the first half of the lots in 2020, we signed the lot release form, that's not required.
Okay.
So this is a corrective lot release form that has been reviewed by Town Council.
Great.
Releases all the lots once and for all.
Okay, perfect.
The board already voted to release the lots.
Has that drainage been cleaned?
We've been getting drainage reports from the engineers on a regular basis, and we're pretty happy.
Jude's on mine.
Yeah, the silt section did that the same day.
So, since we're still on White until Heights, was there another drain, there's two that's down at the bottom? Is there another drain across the street in the cul-de-sac?
Is this the only place to sign?
Because it doesn't look like there's one over there in the cul-de-sac.
No.
I'd have to look at previous pitches. There was, there was two down at the bottom where the retention pond is that are in that cul-de-sac. But there was one across, across the cul-de-sac way. It's got the curving on it, but there's no drain there.
Yeah, the ones that has the sacks were full.
That is Jude.
And you can't solve the problem immediately and they have that.
Yeah, those are the sacks inside the, inside the drains. Yeah.
I'll stop at your last page because mine still says must reach.
May I have the Peter Michael covenant?
Yep. Board, are we ready to move on from this?
Yeah. I think we've all signed that.
ASD well.
What signature was going on, White Heights?
Yeah.
I sent the covenant, I didn't do. Were we still on White Heights?
No. Well, we did, but the covenant goes to the Peter Michael. ASD well, Lake Solar Storm Water Management update?
No update at this time.
Okay. Deer Crossing update?
We also have executed lot release document in our signature folder.
Got that, yep.
We voted on a previous meeting.
Okay. Evergreen Estates update?
So with that one, I added that to our agenda because it's going to be coming to us eventually.
Okay.
This was an approved subdivision some time ago that has been sitting dormant. I believe it's known as Thomas Circle.
Yeah, well, yeah.
No.
That's the backwards V, off of South Street.
Yeah.
It's the name of the road.
Oh, okay.
Yes. The name of the road is Thomas Circle.
Okay.
Where's that on? That's off of South Street.
209 South.
Okay.
There's a, it's a flexible, it's a flexible development.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that one was a flex. It was 23 lots with an eighth lot bonus up to 31 total units.
And then six duplexes or four duplexes?
Right, yeah, that's the one.
Eight units, yeah.
So gentlemen, it's looking to purchase that and possibly make amendments to it. I just wanted to let the board know that it's something that's going to be coming back to us eventually. I have a call to return to him that I got today.
Okay.
Modification of that flex development, make some changes, but ultimately nothing, nothing too big. We're not going to change the unit types, but we'll see it eventually.
Okay.
Added to our agenda, this is something that is continued development since the roadway was the one. Building inspector has confirmed that it's continued development, it's not abandoned, so we can still work on it as is. But he's looking to modify.
Okay. Stone Gate Development, request for public road acceptance.
Yep, so yeah, Stone Gate has had multiple phases over its lifespan. The loop itself, Cobblestone Drive is accepted, there's two cul-de-sacs coming off. And those have not yet been accepted. So what, I've been approached by the developer, I believe the son of the developer. Because they still have a bond, they want to release, so they got to get the road accepted first. So I have commissioned a praise engineering to do a review of his as-built plant. And we will be receiving a review on those soon for consideration for a springtime meeting acceptance.
Okay.
And I think we just have to have a highway commission to take a review of the road too.
They will.
And inslechmen, yeah.
Inslechmen and the bounds.
Yeah, it's a sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, the bounds.
Yeah.
Oak Street Solar, request for payorereview bond estimates?
Yes, Oak Street Solar sent us some estimates for decommissioning stormwater management. I sent those off to a payorereview consultant as well. For that one and the previous one, we've received the amount, we've received payment. Now the work just needs to be done just for the review.
Okay.
Just confirming the amount for them.
Okay.
More of an FYI for it.
Can you, just through the chair, can you, instead of calling, well, you could put slash, but whatever the former name was.
Blue Wave?
Blue Wave, yeah, just because it's.
Oh, yeah.
Because I know it's changing hands, but I think it would just help the public if they were still wanting to attend.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah. Recommendation for land surveyor, subdivision monuments?
How about bounce? I reached out to a surveyor that I've seen his work over a period of 15 years. Said every time he brought in an A and R over the years, which is perfect, that was really good. I reached out to Mark Blanchard, currently works part-time with McClure Engineering out of Charleston. And told him about our bounce project, the money that we have to spend before the end of the fiscal year and the annual revolving bounce. And kind of introduced him to the project, and he said it's something he would be interested in.
Okay.
With the board's blessing, I'd be happy to engage him on a project once he kind of gives me a better acceptance.
So be it.
Yeah. If it's in the budget.
Right. And I think the only thing we asked from the other people who bided on it was give us a roughly per dollar per bound cost.
That's what I asked for.
Yeah, that's all. I think that was just what we did with Andrews and.
Would you like a form of motion?
That'd be nice.
Okay.
To engage the surveyor.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to engage Blanchard.
Or Mark Blanchard.
Mark Blanchard for the land surveying for our highway bounds.
Motion made by Les, seconded by Aaron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Go for it. Right, the time is 7:15. We have a 7:15 public hearing. Continued Dark Stream LLC, 116 Davis Street, requesting to continue to January 27th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Jake. Seconded by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Director of Community Development Updates, do you have any, Mr. Director?
Through the chair, let me go back one. Are we going to go for more markers for the next four or eight companies?
Yes, yes, it's right, yeah.
Could be in the.
Do we have an amount we're going to go for? We're going to say with the 12, five?
No, we went for more than last time.
Yeah, but it's.
That's because we didn't do them for a while.
It would be in our budget now, planning board budget, that's what Matt Woljak wanted to do, and Matt can update us on it.
Well, that's probably just making sure which way we're going here.
Oh, so it's not going to go to town meeting?
So we're doing it in budget?
From what I understand, we have 12,000 that we have to spend before the end of the fiscal year. And we're getting 12, 24,000 allotted handling.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not sure how that went at town meeting or whatnot, that's just exactly.
So our cruise control.
Yeah.
Let's just do that.
We just got to get someone in place to do the work.
Well, if you got a guy.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that we all know what's going on here.
Okay, do you want to continue with your updates or is that it?
So what I started doing with our agenda is I'm going to, it's going to look like that consistently, just in case things kind of surprise us. Whether they're subdivisions, special permits.
Oh, okay, like those line items, just so that, just in case it's unanticipated, you have a placeholder and you can freely, you can freely speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Something comes in where, you know, there's an emergency or there's a stormwater situation and we need to act on it right away. It'll be there where we can take it under that.
That's fine.
I don't think I had anything specific that's not already listed on.
And you've written the word miscellaneous?
Yeah, it's not that one.
Is that, was that Town Council approved?
It's catchall.
So I've seen it done before.
Okay.
If you look at some of the other agendas of our boards and committees, particularly has a line on there that says, for items not anticipated ahead of the agenda being posted. So I just put it in one word.
Okay, that's cool.
Kind of covers it.
So you are all set, you don't have anything?
No, not yet. I'm going to have more updates individually from our department at our next meeting. Recommendations for town meeting bylaws consideration, items like that. One thing I actually.
For 12 minutes.
Yeah, that's what I am.
I actually do want to make this.
Preview?
We talked about it kind of before we started, we're going to do it anyway. The board asked me at our last meeting to get a status update on 93 Davis Street, the paving of Capital, Kansas Capital.
Yeah.
And I met with Theresa Mattson earlier this week, and she gave me a letter from her paving company. Apology is not having the schedule installed top course. Give me any attention to reschedule in April, the asphalt front reopened, wanted loads to install the top course. Their general feeling was that they wanted to sit through the winter and then do the top course after that. Originally, they were supposed to have it done by November, but they ran into some complications because of that. My request to them was give you something in writing that says they'll do it, and that's what I got.
Perfect.
This is the third time we've gone through this.
Listen, I had to have paving work done in the last few months, and it was a tight window because of the rain and everybody was backed up and equipment failures and so, you know, at least we've got something in writing and I think.
So that means the wording and the writing from the previous meeting didn't mean anything. What's going to be the difference with this piece of paper than something being said at one of our meetings?
Jack, great question. So I have those, I have those minutes. Those are on, those are such as minutes, those items will stand no matter what. This just gives them a schedule. One of the things that we talked about at our previous meeting was, was it concrete dividers versus guard rail? And the board allowed them to do the concrete dividers instead of the guard rail, the substitution. So that's obviously still going to stand. But as far as the timeline and such, if the board is okay with April, you'd be making that determination here today.
We had mentioned at the last meeting that, I mean, when we talked about it, that the weather availability could impact that. We understood that, so I think it's inconsistent. We, we've had it with developers, through the chair, just with developers, we're trying to do sidewalks and other delays. I mean, now you're going to start seeing supply issues and supply chain issues, and we don't know how that's going to trickle out, I mean, with, with projects. You know, it's. One at a time, no worries. It's the industry, you know, it's the world we live in today.
You're allowing pain needs to get put on something, that's what's going on. So I'm just, through the chair, just put it up there.
Okay. All right. It's on record. Meeting minutes?
I guess I can sneak one more in there.
Sure.
We do have a draft decision that was prepared for an item that we closed at our last meeting. That is for the property of Blackstone.
Oh, yeah.
Draft decision is in all of your packets next week. And that is available for signature. This was reviewed by council and agreed on in the language. I also shared it with the applicant who gave comments back, and we, both parties agreed on language. That is available for signature.
It's good for both parties to agree on language.
Do we want to do meeting minutes?
Yes.
Got nine minutes.
Yep. Mike, how we doing?
First time I've seen these, so I don't know. I got time to look though.
Yeah, we'll look with you. What are we looking at first? November?
Yep.
They are old, aren't they?
Did you read it?
Which ones? Oh. Yeah. Sorry. Put them in the November 18th minutes. One change I would say is they got, you know, they got non-voting members, Jen.
Ken Fraser.
Yeah, I almost dropped this down a line and just say the non-voting members then are like Matt Planner, you know what I mean, Jen and.
Well, she, yeah, because she's a town employee, she has a title, doesn't she?
Yeah.
Instead of a non-voting.
Right, that's really.
She's not really a member.
Correct.
Yeah.
So what's her title?
She's the assistant.
What's her title?
Principal Clerk.
What's her email say?
Yeah, and then your community director. Yeah, so not town planner.
That's good, that'll be consistent.
Yeah, I'm sure she just.
Yeah, just update Matt's title and give Jen a title.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Now, I mean, I'm on a separate line, is that clear to the public that I'm a member?
How you doing? You were on the Zoom.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it could have been anybody on Zoom.
I know.
So how do you want it?
Well, I would move you back up into attendance and just.
Put parenthesis.
Yeah, via Zoom.
Yeah.
Get that mic? No, but that's okay.
You were going to stick somebody up in the, under the attendance grouping?
Yeah, Aaron.
Yeah, so I'll be after Mike's sticker and then just put my name, comment my name, and then parentheses via Zoom.
Hey, Matt, did you check those Whitein Reservoir Estates, oh, Whitein spelled wrong, for the bounds, the monuments?
Ken and I went over that together.
Okay, there were some shown on the plans.
I believe so.
Okay. Okay.
Matt?
Yes.
Can you also see if there is a, you drag down to the bottom, there was two drains right next to each other in the cul-de-sac? And there was a third one that was off on the far side. Do you show a piece of granite there for a catch basin? There's no catch basin.
Oh, okay.
So it was a little weird, and I thought there was more than just two in the cul-de-sac.
First line on page two, just Peter Michael Business Park, Davis Street, not David.
Ah, good catch.
Typo.
Yeah, and if you go back, public hearing, number four is public spelled wrong too. Publics.
Page two, the top, to the right, David Street, it's Davis. I mean, this is tiny, but number 11, 9:45 PM, that's the third line down, motion with grant extension made by Jake. Not made Jake.
I like it.
Yeah, man.
Matt would like to start new decision templates, and he would like the board to have nameplates.
Yeah, I saw that.
Oh, okay. New permit templates, so are you starting those?
Yeah, we've already, we've already done that.
But we're not using them yet?
Yeah.
Not in the budget.
I think that, well.
Weren't there old ones?
Were you talking about the accessory apartments?
Oh, yeah, about accessory apartments.
What?
I got a bigger, bigger opinion on that than, than I'm going to give tonight, but. No, that template that we use is fine, we haven't changed it yet. I think at next meeting, that's something I'd be happy to talk about.
Okay.
What's your, what's your bone to pick?
What's your, what's your opinion on this, your comment?
Okay, we'll hold it in the next.
Open up end of those box.
Yeah, we got two minutes.
Well, first, could we please, I'm going to entertain a motion on these November 18th, 2021.
Let's get that.
Yep.
Only motion to accept them with amended changes we discussed.
Motion is made by Jake.
Second.
Seconded by Ernie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then you have two minutes at the other floor.
So I'm going to open up more than two minutes just by time, because ultimately with a special permit and you put a shelf life on it, that expiration date is to start the work, so to speak, before it begins occupancy. So the fact that we're renewing these every three years is actually contrary to the reason for an expiration on a special permit. So even though we've been renewing these things annually for folks, because by preliminary opinion, that that's not something we're supposed to be doing.
I 100% agree.
Yeah, I think the town's setting.
Or you don't, or you don't call it a special permit.
Yeah.
But I think that was more record-keeping mechanism instead of the actual, something that's purposeful, yeah.
To keep track of what was going on.
Correct.
But the word special permit is stated on, because that's what it was originally set up as. The nomenclature was left there, but it's for nothing more than a check and balance.
Well, I think we were in the bylaws as requiring it by special permit in the chart. That's what, where we made our mistake from the beginning.
And we've been following that.
Yeah.
I don't think it should be there.
No.
Okay, so yes, we all support you in this change.
Don't be afraid.
We have more.
Okay, all right, it is 7:30. So. Public hearing continued, Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, application for a special permit and definitive subdivision residential compound Hawk Hill Farms, 768 and 772 Northwest Main Street, possible. 768 and 772 Northwest Main Street, possible votes. You have the floor. Can you hear us?
I can.
Oh, okay, we can hear you now.
You have to click the thing that says, um,
Unmute?
Microphone. Yeah. I believe, uh, my update for tonight is that, um, the client or the applicant has conceded to re, have the driveway redesigned after 10% per the the fire department's request and planning board's request. That is being done and stamped and off to the Graves Engineering probably Tuesday or Wednesday of this fall of this coming week. We did also, we did put a row of arbor bybies along the butter's line going from telephone pole to telephone pole. That was discussed with the butter. I know there's other elements that have, have to go along with the butter's request, but we did, seeing that the applicant doesn't want to, um, provide any language saying that they won't do certain things that are already part of the, the special permit application. We're proposing to put in the arbor bybies as a sign of good faith that we're trying to work with the butter and try and work with the planning board. I did get updated today and I got a few, um, small test holes and I can, I'll have a report, a full report for you as far as the ledge that I was talking about the last hearing. So in order to move the road over, there's some ledge in the way to make the alignment go 30 feet off of the, the butter's resident, the property. So to make that comply, we would have to shift the road over and redo the gravel, the road base and probably hammer, you know, do something that may peel up. I don't know what type of ledge it is, but there's definitely a hunk of ledge over there in the way. And I will, I will submit with the plans, with the revised 10% grade, I will submit documentation saying to that effect. And then I believe the other two items was the easement, well, the easement, um, for the landlocked parcel. I believe Matt has had a conversation with town council and I could, I would rather have Matt explain that because he's the one that had the conversations with him. But the two things that we were doing was the arbor bybies along the butter's in the 10% grade. So that'll be coming soon.
Okay. Would you like to say anything?
Sure.
I felt a couple of wheels on the 2A running over me.
So, yeah, there's a, ultimately, we did talk to town council with Ken Fraser and I had a meeting, a Zoom meeting with town council and went over our questions that the board had about easement, the requesting letter from the agreement between landowners and the, um, grade. So ultimately, town council, we spoke and then I got, did an email exchange so that we had it in writing, which serves the record to town council. In general, the easement is not something that town council thinks is the purpose of a residential compound. That is the opposite of definitive, which would require an easement, but since it's for private purposes, it needs to consider as a case for that to be dubious. As far as the requirement for signing a letter between landowners, while it can be requested, it can't be reasonably asked for. Uh, it's a condition. Excuse me, it can be a condition if the parties are not willing to do it.
It can or can't?
It can be a condition if the parties are willing.
Sorry, let me try that again.
If they're willing, but if
Yes.
One is not willing, it cannot.
There you go. And as far as the 10% grade, um, town council believes that because that's a public safety concern, it's absolutely something that the board can hang, hang their hats on. Those are the general sense of those three items that you guys asked me to get.
Yeah, and I think I did request it, not demand it. And I think that that is our historical position when it comes to things like this.
Pressure and something like that.
So
And sure. They can be conditioned as such. They show it on the plan, that's
Yeah. The plan is better than the decision, really, because people lose the decision, but they always have the plan to build on. Board, any comments, questions? I think we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah. But just through the chair, I think it resolves everything that we had questions about and then we wanted to check on that we didn't, we weren't sure legally with town council about the easements and the other items. So the applicant's willing to do the 10%, which is great. I think that's what we asked for and the plans, I think, just helps both parties.
He's checking on the 30 foot.
30 foot.
He's going to see what's there.
Yeah.
And then once we know what's going on in these areas, then we'll go from there.
Is that going to give Graves enough time to review the new plan?
Not sure really.
Okay.
Depending when we get the plan.
Okay. Yeah, Jude, if you could get that as soon as possible, so that we can try to resolve it on the 27th?
Yeah, there's, there's some logistics on my end between Andrew and me and stuff, so the Tuesdays should be the day that it gets done and I'm going to hand deliver it to Graves.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, um, this is a public hearing. And if any audience have questions, name and address, please.
I have some column, I have a little landmark to add. I had, I talked to Mr. Benoit. From what I understand about the easement, that's off of the existing road that they're putting in. And it's in the bylaws and I can't come off an easement with, off of that existing road. But like I said the last time, there's other, there's two other ways in. They don't have to come off of that road. That's not, that's not breaking the bylaws.
Yeah.
And absolutely, you're absolutely right about that, but what's in front of us now is just what's coming off our roadway. If there's another way in through other town lands, that's where you'd open that dialogue with the town administrator and see if that's something that the town would be willing to entertain.
Right, but the town entertaining it doesn't really matter if I can't get past the town line. You know what I'm saying? The town entertains it, that I'm blocked.
Yeah.
And in the bylaws with the compound, at the risk of, you know, leaving it here, um, where and only where the board determines that such residential compound is remote development of the parcel in the best interest of the town, considering the factors specified herein. So it's the best interest of the town. And doing a compound basically is a waiver in itself. So obviously, where it's a waiver from otherwise applicable rules or regulations of a planning board, the approval of a residential compound is within the informed discretion of the board of pursuits. So even if, where I'm, again, trying to unlandmark land, I don't see how that's not in the best interest of the town, number one. And number two, denying a compound isn't necessarily denying a subdivision. They can still do a subdivision, which would open up them to freely access land in the, in the back. It's just kind of a little bit of a give and take here. You know what I'm saying?
Just to the chair, I think, if it was a subdivision, then accessing abutting landlocked parcels is underneath the subdivision. That's what councils look through. That's what we've done in the past. But since it's a, it's a, um, you know, a family compound, that's actually, we're talking about the parcel itself and it's beneficial to the town to say, instead of having, you know, 10 homes there, it's only going to be X amount of homes. So that's beneficial. It has nothing to do with the abutting, it's just strictly that parcel. Has nothing to do with the abutting parcels at that point. When you talk about a family compound, all the abutting parcels doesn't matter. It's that one parcel, what we're doing with that. If it was in a subdivision, then in the past, we've turned around and said, okay, with a subdivision, trying to provide access to a landlocked parcel. But in a family compound, it's off the table.
Which I totally understand. But like I say, you're talking six houses, but there's not going to be site, there's not going to be more down the road. And basically allowing more properties to, to stop access now is guaranteeing this landmark road. Because I still have to go through the same applicant and now two other pieces of the property in order to get access. So it's just ensuring that the land's going to be landmarked from this point on. You know, and again, I understand that the compound, I definitely understand that, but with being a compound, it's still a waiver. The fact of having a compound is a waiver.
Not a waiver, it's a special permit.
Special permit.
Uh, what?
Yeah, it has waivers.
Yeah. So, okay, so it's in our zoning bylaws, it is not a special permit. It's a process of approval.
Right.
So it's not a special permit. It's not a waiver. It's in our bylaws and they're going with what our bylaws say. So this is not like waiving subdivision control. It's its own entity of flavor, of a type of development, creative development. And I think what I'm hearing is that there's no, um, you know, there's no requirement for the applicant, there's no requirement for the board to, um, to gain access to the land.
No mandate.
Yeah.
Right.
Like, man. So I don't, I think that there should be more investigation on where the other, um, options for accesses.
Yeah, there's no other options. There's no other options. So, and that's, that's like I said, that's the whole thing. I definitely understand, um, but
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, there's really nothing that can point us to requiring the easement access.
Right. The only way would be the denial of the compound, which would then make it to the subdivision, which would then open up access for easements.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, name and address, please.
774 Northwest Main. I'd like nothing better for this project to go through for Megan Joe and, you know, for them to downsize, build their retirement home and then to go home to their son, walk their son, and no problem with that. The only thing I'm worried about is the future, if it becomes something more than what's being proposed. And I do appreciate them having trees and all that, but are you saying that there was to remove the road or not?
They're looking
They're going to redesign the roadway to meet the requirements of their fire chief. Oh.
You want to check on the ledge?
Yeah, so there you have to do some exploratory tests.
See if it's feasible.
Yeah.
I do want the project to go through as proposed. But I don't want something to be added in the future in the road to be at where the distance is at now. Twenty years ago, I sat in this building and I was told two lots. It's been a great, great 20 years. No problem. You know, and I think I'm being reasonable, saying do what's proposed, but, you know, that road hasn't limits. I think five houses is a limit.
Right, and there will be like a homeowners association, there will be a lot of paperwork that will cement into place the number of homes. So as far as re-subdividing, do you want to read the section of the bylaw? Matt will read it to you.
For the exact section, Chair, ultimately, the purpose of a residential compound is not for future development at all. So this can't, it can't be duplexes. And once, if, if this is approved, it cannot be expanded according to our regulations.
And the permit will read as that? So
Future can have to be built there, that's it. Fine with that.
So that's what we're making a decision regarding on that. So they've added the arbor byde as the buffer. And you were mentioning about the location of the roadway. So are you saying now that you, as long as there's not future development, that you're okay with the location of the entrance and the driveway?
Reason to move it, that's what's being proposed is all they're going to do, then I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Just the 10%.
Okay, so would you be willing to put something in writing, saying that you are agreeable to that?
Yeah. Yeah, as long as the, and that same, whatever is written up, it's going to say that it's only going to be five lots, then, yeah. So we can all sign.
And our bylaws state that it cannot be broken back up again.
Be conditioned as such.
It can be conditioned as such.
And in your letter too, you can put, you know, you support it and follow in the guidance of the town bylaw and all, you know.
Yeah, you would prepare the letter and you would just sign it and we would have it as part of the record. No one else needs to sign it. You are the butter. We have the, the buffer that's in our, our regs. So that's why there's a, there's the issue. But you would be the one kind of authorizing and it would be a paper trail, it would be for the record. And it would be in part of the decision that we received a letter kind of granting the relief of the buffer, the required buffer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll grant that as long as, and I'm not saying letters, it's going to
You would have to prepare it. You can handwrite it or you can type it, whatever. You would prepare it.
Send me an email.
Yeah, send him an email.
Yeah, he'll show you the section.
Right. So, um, anyone else have any questions regarding? Megan, I can't see you, but did you read it?
All good.
Okay. Thank you. Jude, are you all set?
I'm good.
Okay. Sounds awesome. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to January 27th at 7:15 PM.
So vote.
Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Ernie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you next time.
Did you guys get letters from the town council? The town public record?
No, not town council, that's privileged information.
That's it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's our privileged communication.
Ernie, quiet.
We can, we can act on releasing it.
Can you just make sure these are in?
Any correspondence, no?
In the next meeting?
We can act on releasing it. We can't do it until we do that.
Can we act over the agenda again?
Too late now.
I'll try to hold on to it.
They can do a formal request. They can do a formal request to Matt.
Yeah.
So I think you took the pencil.
I have a question for the chair.
Yes.
Could you guys, could you handle the A and R when I couldn't?
Yes.
All set.
I couldn't hear or speak.
Hey, great job.
All done.
Yeah, I did great, didn't I?
Yeah, you did.
All right, thank you.
You're all right.
Thank you.
Evening.
Okay.
Two minutes.
It's over, okay.
No way. Someone's over.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Oh, for them to put something up?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, behind, yeah, behind Ernie.
Okay, next item on our agenda, Family Convenience Center, 7:45 PM, public hearing, application for site plan review and aquifer special permit, 74 Main Street. Town Douglas Planning Board legal notice of public hearing, name of applicant, Douglas Convenience Center Incorporated. Name of owner, Ray B. Whitehead. Date and time of public hearing, Thursday, January 13th, 2022. Subject matter of the hearing, the applicant is requesting a special permit from the Douglas Planning Board pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, section 8.1, water resource protection overlay district and section 9.3. Project description, the project consists of the construction and operation of a 24-hour, 9,600-square-foot convenience store with drive-through window and fuel pumps. Project site location, 74 Main Street, Douglas Mass, assessors map 188, parcels 33, place of public hearing, Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Visit www.douglas-ma.gov for agenda and Zoom information. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mass. Okay, welcome. Name and address.
Good evening, Ray Whitehead, 17 Beacon Road in Webster. I own and operate Family Convenience Center at 63 Main Street and I own the subject property at 74 Main Street. I have with me my store manager, Sam Skoronsky, my civil engineer, Rob Lucier, and my traffic engineer consultant, Jeff Dirk from Vines and Associates. I just want to take a moment, introduce the project, and I'd like to hand it over to the people who know what they're talking about. Has anybody, we've been before you before, we've shared with some of our problems, our safety concerns at our current site of 63 Main Street, the Duncan Cubex into the street. The traffic for just coming in and out is unorganized on the site. Our dispensers are located at a horrible position with the entrance and exits. And when we get busy, it's, it is just what we feel is a safety, uh, problem waiting to happen. And we've tried to look to expand And we've tried to look to expand sideways, we've tried to do a lot of things, and nothing's successful, and this is basically our plan B, is to start over completely. So what we're proposing is a brand new store, more than three times the size of our current store, instead of two dispensers, five dispensers, above ground storage tanks in the rear with state-of-the-art containment systems, 74 parking spaces, better parking spaces, better flow. Instead of nine cars in the Duncan Q, there's like 26, which is like unheard of, but it solves what we believe are all the operational and safety problems we're having at the current store. So this is just a computer rendering of what the site, the building and with the dispensers and canopy would look like, and this is just a little closer on the building. And we hope to do it. I want to turn it over to Rob Lucier from CMG Engineering, who has done all the calculations and share with you what his work is.
Good evening, everyone. Rob Lucier from CMG. My plans are nowhere as pretty as the architectural rendering, so I apologize. Now for the board. So I assume the board is pretty much familiar with the site. It's the, it's located right on the corner of Rydell Road and Main Street, about five acres, a little bit over. We have some wetlands to the rear portion of the property. I believe this is the Douglas transfer station behind. There's also some wetlands across the street on Main Street. So we do have some resource areas that we have to pay attention to when we were designing the project. As far as the site goes, the convenience store itself is about 9,600 square feet, located at the center of the site. We have associated parking in the front and on the sides of the building. There's also the drive-through lane, as Ray said, it's, it can queue a lot of cars. I think we have right here, there's 16 cars to this corner, but we can accommodate even more on site if need be. Additionally, there's also a bypass lane in the back, which will be used for if there's deliveries, we have a nice loading area behind here, so just to separate traffic patterns, so it won't be as congested as the current site. So a lot safer. In the front of the site will be the fuel canopy with five fuel dispensers. We have, as Ray stated, we have above ground storage tanks behind the building, they have to be above ground storage tanks, we can't be subgrade due to the aquifer protection overlay district. And there'll be state-of-the-art containment and spill prevention. As far as the utilities go, there is municipal water in the site, so we'll be connected to that. There's no sewer, so this will be on septic, so we'll have to design a septic system Title 5 compliant with the Board of Health. And right now, we're locating them here, we've done test pits for both septic and for the infiltration basins that we have proposed, which I'll get into in a moment, but onsite soils are really great, we have all nice sand, pretty deep brown water, so it's ideal really for stormwater containment. So as far as drainage goes, because the soils are so good, we have two basins in the front of the site where we'll be able to capture, contain, and infiltrate all stormwater runoff all the way up to a hundred year storm. So we're not going to be discharging anything into the Main Street right away, going into their, the town-owned storm sewer. So it'll all be contained on site. We also are proposing some treatment options, so we have deep-sunk-potted catch basins, we'll also have oil-water separators on site, there's a 3,000 gallon and a 4,000 gallon one for ample oil storage capacity in the case of a spill, which I can kind of go over the spill prevention measures maybe a little bit later, if the board is interested. And then, I think as far as utilities goes, well, we're gonna have some, we're gonna have propane tanks in the back, there's generator transformer, we're right now coordinating really the exact design with National Grid and making sure that we have the connections figured out, so. That's basically the overview of what we're proposing for the site. I think now it might be good to jump over to Jeff Dirk, our traffic consultant, who has a brief presentation regarding traffic, and then after that, be happy to answer any questions. We also have peer review, that we just received the letter a couple of weeks ago, so I'd be happy to go over some of those items too, but I think right now, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, I think as far as the review letter, there's, you know, a bunch of minor plan changes that, for revisions, but after we hear from Jeff, yeah, after we hear from Jeff, then we will go to the, like, the important ones.
Absolutely.
And then you can write, you can run through those, okay?
Sure.
All right, Jeff, name and address, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, I'm the managing partner with Vines and Associates. I live with the business in Andover, Massachusetts, and we're the transportation consultants for the project. So I'm gonna provide a general, just an overview of the transportation analysis that we completed, which hopefully you all have a copy of in your packet. And if the chair doesn't mind, I'll share my screen just to go through some summary slides.
Okay.
Is my screen is all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So just by giving an overall summary of the findings of this thing, this study was prepared, I think importantly, in consultation with towns, we worked with the town planner as we conducted the assessment, to understand projects in the area and any planning efforts that the town has undertaken. But the study was also prepared in accordance with NASTIOT guidelines, so they set the standards and methodology that we need to follow in conducting our analysis. And I think as the, as the name implies, it's an assessment of all modes of transportation, so we're not just looking at vehicles, we're also looking at pedestrians and bicycles, as well as any public transportation services in the area. So it's intended to be an all-encompassing assessment of the transportation infrastructure serving the area. Importantly, given the pandemic-related situation that we're in, is that there are specific protocols that we have to follow in conducting our transportation analysis, and those protocols were set by the Department of Transportation back in early 2020, when the pandemic was actually starting to come to light. Just dealing with the methodology that we follow as we conduct any new traffic counts, really the crux of it is that any new traffic counts have to be compared to historical traffic counts. So NASTIOT considers 2019 now to be existing conditions, just in the pandemic. So we're always looking at 2019 or older data as a baseline to see if any adjustments are needed to be made to current traffic count data. So that, that methodology was followed in conducting our traffic study, this was done this year, or I'm sorry, late, late last year, I think our data collection was completed. So it was, and well, the pandemic was taking place, although not at the height of the pandemic, it was done during the summertime, so at that time, as probably everyone's aware, you know, we had a kind of a lull, and unfortunately, we're not back in that lull where we were back in the summertime, and things were getting a little better. With respect to the overall findings of the study, the project is not expected to have significant impact in terms of increases in delays for vehicle queuing along the road we are at, at the intersections of the study, and I'll talk about those in a minute. By that, I mean that when we looked at the delays, they didn't increase any more than, anywhere between three to six seconds was the increase in delay for any movements. In particular, you know, left turn movements coming out of any of the side streets or driveways in the area are difficult during the peak hours, so as we're looking at those movements, that's where you can see those increased delays. And in terms of increases in vehicle queuing, the increases were approximately one to two vehicles. So as I talk about not being significant, that's what we're talking about in terms of significance as we're, as we're looking at it. And the last two things really deal with safety. So the two safety-related items that we look at are motor vehicle crashes in the area. If we look at the historical data of the past years in terms of crash trends, and what we found was, unfortunately, there is not any significant crash trends in the area, very low incidence of motor vehicle crashes, and nothing that was above any of the steady averages. There's also no high crash locations in this area, I don't think there's any along Route 16 within the town, so that's a good thing with despite that sighting of projects along this roadway. And then lastly, with regards to safety, we'll talk about this in a minute as I, as we, a few minutes, as we get to the concept plans that we've developed. But importantly, as we locate the driveways, as both, we were talking about the site plan and introducing the project, making sure that those driveways are properly located so that we have proper lines of sight. So the driveways are located at a position where sightlines, especially along Main Street, the sightlines are well in excess of 500 feet, so there's no impediment really, sightlines from the driveway there, so that's a, that's a superior location with the type of sightlines. So we look at Rydell Road, the sightlines are appropriate for the posted speed limit along that roadway, the vehicles are probably driving close to that posted speed limit, given the location of the driveway, because they're approaching Main Street, so the vehicles are either slowing as they're approaching Main Street, or if they're transitioning from Main Street onto Rydell, they're not driving at the posted speed limit, they're just accelerating as they're coming around the corners. The sightlines, there is sufficient, you have clear sight distance from the driveway down in Main Street. So now, getting into a little bit more detail in the traffic setting, so this, this slide here just shows the relative location of the project site, it's Main Street, the Route 16 is running, basically going in a southeast and north, north, I'm sorry, southwest and northeast direction on the slide here, and you see West Street in this location here, and here's Rydell Street as it comes down past the project site, and I think the transfer station is in this area here, as it was running, so just somewhere in this area here to the north where the project site is located. So this slide here shows the study area that we had evaluated, so it's essentially the project site, this location here, so Brookline Terrace, which is located opposite the site, and then on either side, Rydell Road and West Street were contained within the study area. So that's essentially, the intersection's on either side of the site, and that's where traffic from the project will be most concentrated. What I also want to point out on the slide is where you see the orange lines here, the dashed orange lines, and the, the blue line here, those are the locations where there are sidewalks, and there's a crosswalk up at West Street, because again, as we're looking at all modes of transportation, we want to see how the site relates to what's available within the study area for both pedestrian facilities and bicycle facilities. So the sidewalks are really along Main Street to the northeast of the project site, and then there's a segment along West Street, so they're not really, they don't extend down into the area where the project site is located. There's no full bicycle facilities in the area, but the roadways are generally wide enough for a shared travelway condition, so you need a combined traveling shoulder 14 feet to be considered as a shared travelway. And that, that dimension would mean that a bicyclist can be riding the shoulder, and a motor vehicle can pass them, it doesn't need to cross the center line. So Main Street generally has that type of a configuration, so it is a shared road configuration. It's not wide enough to strike a bike lane, but it does meet the shared road standards. Now just by way of traffic volumes in the area, so Main Street in the city of the site accommodates about 12,000 vehicles per day, so that is two-way traffic over a 24-hour period. The roadway actually accommodates about the same volume on a weekday and Saturday, so it's generally about the same happens, about 12,000. It could have, could have the influence of the transfer station in the area, and that that does increase some of the volumes, but generally, it's the same traffic pattern weekdays and weekends is what we, on Sunday, obviously, it'd be a little bit more, but a Saturday and a weekday are about the same. The hourly volumes, if you look at peak hour volumes, so the highest volume hour in the morning, and the peak is actually 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning, and in the evening, it's 4:30 to 5:30. On a Saturday, the peak is somewhere between 11:15 and 12:15. And during those three time periods, there's about 1,000 vehicles per hour traveling along this section of the roadway, so it's about 10% of the daily volume, and that's pretty typical, that's what we would expect on roadway of this, of this type. Now, the posted speed limit on Main Street is 40 miles an hour. When we were measuring the traffic volumes, so there's 12,000 vehicles per day, and we measured those over three days, three-day periods, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so over three days, it's about 36,000 vehicles, someone measured our travel speeds. So again, posted speed limit is 40 miles an hour, as we measured the 85 percentile speed of those 36,000 vehicles, and that's the speed at which 85% travel at or below, we found that it was pretty close to the posted speed limit. So we didn't find that the majority of the vehicles are traveling within the speed limit on the roadway itself, and not in excess of that. So that's a big thing, meaning that the speed limit is appropriate for this section of roadway, so. And I mentioned the motor vehicle crash data, we did, as we looked at the crashes at the intersections as well as along the roadway, there were no high crash locations, they were all below the state average. In terms of the types of crashes, they tended to be angle-type crashes, so people turning from either West Street or Rydell Road, and the crashes resulted in property damage only, but again, there was a low incidence of crashes, nothing that was above the state average. So we are required to look at a future planning horizon, so the planning horizon is seven years in the future, so it's the year 2028. As I mentioned, we work with the town planner to understand projects in the area that haven't been built that might be constructed within that seven-year time period. So there was one residential project along Main Street to the east of the site, about 24 units, a single-family subdivision, that we included in the traffic setting that was identified. And we also work with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to understand just general traffic growth, so if this board never approved any more projects in the area, but there was just general growth in traffic, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has a regional model that they include in their planning, and that regional model has a growth rate of just over 1%, so we use the 1.5% growth rate. So again, we added the traffic from that 24-lot subdivision, but we also grew traffic volumes 1.5% in the year, seven years, and that's, the year 2028, the project wasn't built, so that's our, that's our no-builds condition, so that's what we're gonna compare the build condition to with the project. So this slide here, and I hope it's not that difficult to see on the screen that you have, but this slide shows the traffic characteristics of the project, and I highlighted in yellow the column that shows the net new traffic on the roadway that we expect from the project. I should mention that, you know, as Ray was speaking about the family convenience plaza that he has, we're assuming essentially that plaza stays, where that use stays in place, so it stills generating traffic, and we're adding this new traffic on top of that, that's probably not realistic, however, we would need to assume some use on that site, and given, you know, that it's there to any functioning as it does, albeit it was acknowledged, you know, could function better in terms of access and circulation, but we're assuming it's, that some type of use like that stays in place, so we're just gonna add this new traffic for the use of the roadway network and assume that that use continues to operate in some fashion. So again, just focusing on the yellow column here, we're expecting on a daily basis, the project, and this is two-way in and out, would produce 1,388 vehicles. And then during each of the peak hours, so this would be 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning, we're predicting it would produce about 195 vehicle trips, so almost half in, half out, just the nature of the convenience stores is, is pass-by trips, so generally, you swing in, you get gas, and then you go out, so what you see is about the same volume of traffic entering and exiting. So during the morning and afternoon peak hours, so this is 4:30 to 5:30, the project would experience about 103 vehicle trips. And then on a Saturday, so this is 11:15 in the morning to 12:15 in the afternoon, the project would produce about 125 vehicle trips. So this would be new traffic on the roadway, so as I mentioned, 12,000 vehicles per day, we would be adding 1,388 to that 12,000 vehicles that are already out there today. And then during each of the peak hours, again, for reference, today's about 1,000 vehicles during each of the peak hours, so 195 we could add as that in the morning, 103 in the evening, 125 during the Saturday in the time period. Given the fact that it's pass-by trips, so this traffic is really derived from traffic going by the site, so people are going to, you know, turn in or turn out to continue, either they're turning or turn out to continue the direction that they were traveling to begin with, so that's the way the turning rules will actually work with the site, it's really focused on, you're coming home from work, you're driving by the site, you swing in, you get gas, and then you continue home over in the morning, you swing in, you get a cup of coffee, you fill up with gas, and then you continue on to work or wherever you're going. So that's, that's the nature of the use, it's a convenience store, so these trips are really trips of convenience, it's really their, their nature. So this slide here shows the distribution of traffic, so look, those new trips I had mentioned here in the yellow highlighted column, as we look at how they relate to the roadway network, this is how they've been distributed, so what you see is about 55% of that traffic is heading to and from the southwest of the site, so it's heading down to get on Route 146 essentially, and then you'd have the same thing coming back in the evening, so that's 55. So that's 55%. 35% is heading more or less towards the downtown area. And then we have 5% each on Rydell and West Street in terms of the traffic. And that's pretty typical of your existing traffic patterns. Because again, you know, we're focusing on deriving traffic from the existing roadway network. And so we expect the distribution as we reflect about current traffic patterns in the area. So as we assign these new trips based on this distribution, as I mentioned about increases in delays in vehicle queuing, in general, operating conditions at the intersections are acceptable. And when I say acceptable, that means it's, as you've heard probably, the levels of service. So there's a report card of intersection operations where, just like a report card, it reports gradations from A to F, where A being the best conditions. F considered failure. An E is a movement or intersection that's operating at capacity. You can't add any more traffic to it, or it'll trip into an F. A D is considered a limited acceptable traffic operations. So ideally, we would like a D at all locations. That's a delay measurement of about 35 to 40 seconds is characteristic of the level of service of D. And you might have, you know, two to three vehicles queuing, so that's what that would be. So as we added the project's traffic to the roadway, we didn't see any significant impacts or increases in delays or vehicle queuing. But there were a couple of movements of note where we were either at or lower capacity. They were the left-turn movements from West Street and then the left-turn movement from Rydell Road during both, during the peak periods, especially during the weekday, the evening in particular. Those movements are difficult to make, so there are delays associated with those movements. As I mentioned, our impact on those delays was about sort of between three to six seconds of increased delay. And then the increase in queuing. So as you look at the delays being at those locations, there's a backup that happens before and after the project, which you really see as maybe a vehicle or two increase in front of you just as a result of the project. So again, that's not something that we determined as being significant. It also wasn't a situation where that increase in queuing blocked any driveways or intersections. So that's another thing we look at, is even if the queue gets longer, we want to make sure we're not blocking adjacent roadways and intersections. So as a result of that analysis, we have a series of recommendations. And Rob has incorporated these in the site plan. And also, you know, as Ray was talking about the improvements in the access, and I'll show you the concept plan in a minute. All of these recommendations are kind of our ideal conditions for operating the site, and these are all reflected in the site plan. So the driveways need to be at least 24 feet width. They need to accommodate fire trucks turning in and out. And as you look at a use like this in particular, probably the largest vehicle that needs to be accommodated is a tanker truck. So the driveways need to be made, designed so that that tanker truck can swing into the site and then maneuver within the property. So that's important, and we've checked that with Rob. He's designed the driveways so fuel trucks can get in and out of the project site in a safe and efficient manner. We will show you the concept plan in a minute. But one of the things that we did with the evaluation is we looked at if there was a need to provide a left-turn lane on Route 16. There are specific criteria that we evaluate. And the driveway and the volume of traffic and the speed of traffic on Route 16 are things that we look at and consider in that evaluation. All the criteria within that. So because of that, we are recommending and showing this project, we will be making modifications to Route 16 widely essentially to provide a dedicated left-turn lane for the project site. In terms of within the site parking aisles, we want to make sure there's at least 23 feet behind the end or perpendicular parking. That's the minimum that you want to have for maneuvering to be able to happen. Couple of recommendations relative to signs, so of course stop signs for exiting traffic. As Rob is describing the direct flow middle operation, you want to make sure that we've got one way and not exercise those are all shown on the site plan. Important as well for safety is the bypass lane that Rob had mentioned. That's critical anytime you have a drive-through. So if someone is in the drive-through lane, they have the ability to get out if they need to for one reason or another, and that's a part of the site plan. All signs to be compliant with manual or vehicle traffic control devices. That's an important item. And then lastly, with respect to sightlines, so I had mentioned we have proper sightlines. We've measured the field, but you want to make sure there's no signs landscaping. And as we look at this time of the year, although it doesn't get to this point, but then we don't have snow piles that block sightlines. So we always want to make sure that we have a recommendation of the study. And to the extent the board approves the project and conditions or recommendations of the study, one of those is that if there are piles of snow that end up near the driveway in sightline area, that they be promptly removed. So we think that's an important consideration as well. And Rydell Road, we do have some intersection improvements there. I'm just going to skip to the concept plan so that you can see what we're doing. So here's Brookline Terrace in this location here, and some Rydell Road here, and of course the site in the center of the plan. So you see us widening Route 16. Most of the widening is actually going to take place opposite the project site. And the reason for that is there's a slight curve in the alignment as you go by the site. So in order to maintain the alignment and the flow of vehicles heading from south to north, then we need to basically bolster the road out in that direction to get the alignment to work. So we're shifting traffic over based on the speed of 40 miles an hour. And then that allows vehicles to bypass the left-turn lane or to transition properly and decelerate as they turn into the lane during entry of the site. So as I mentioned, the new traffic in the project, the important thing with this design is it doesn't impede anyone that's driving along Route 16 that has no interest to patronize the project site. We're getting our traffic completely out of the way so that you continue on in your own direction and you're not impeded by traffic that's entering the site. The left-turn lane does that. It's also important because of the speed on this roadway at 40 miles an hour. This allows a safe transition, slowing down, wait for a gap in traffic, and then make the turn into the project site. At the Rydell Road intersection, I know the board's very familiar with the way it operates today. So it's essentially a wide-open intersection with conflict points on both sides of the telephone pole. It's a typical old New England-style intersection design that we see in a lot of locations where you're preserving the utility pole and ended up in the middle of the road, and then you pass on both sides. It's not ideal. And so what we've done as a part of this project, as you see, is simplifying that alignment. We have preserved the pole in the island. Poles are not, you know, they seem like a simple thing to move, but it is not as easy as I think we all would think it would be just given slack in the lines and a lot of other things that need to be considered when we locate the poles. So for right now, we preserve it, although we're building a raised island with curbage to go around it. So it's going to certainly offer a lot more protection to it. And then as you approach the island itself, there's proper striping to channelize you on either side. And I think it really simplifies the intersection. It does also eliminate conflict points, will reduce the conflict points by simplifying the intersection. We have ensured and run turning analyses to make sure that school, a school bus and a fire truck can both make a round of turn with the island in place. And we know that's important with the fire station on this area. And that has all been checked and verified with respect to the design at this location. So a significant improvement in terms of the design, pavement markings, and upgrading the roadway line, then we think will be a significant benefit to the area itself. And then lastly, we have a series of measures, transportation management measures. You know, these would be a lot more effective if there was a service in the area. However, there is some opportunities. You know, really, what we're gearing to do here is from its most simplistic approaches, you know, if employees can carpool, things like that, we're trying to encourage. And so that's a part of the program. It seems like a small thing, but if we can reduce any trips, it's a net positive. Making sure that employees, you know, they have direct and positive paychecks, that they have ability on-site. I think with a convenience store, it's pretty easy. They have microwaves, refrigerator, things like that already. So that we reduce off-site trip managing. And then lastly, bicycle parking, to make sure that we've got a bicycle rack in the project site, not only just for employees, but also for anyone that does want to ride their bike to the project site. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll stop sharing now. I'll bring it back to the board. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Jeff. That was a great presentation. Board, any questions for the traffic report portion?
Well, yeah, I got a question. Was it ever considered to do a westbound turning lane into the site?
A right-turn lane?
Yes. You have an eastbound, do you have a turn-off lane on the westbound?
So when we provide a right-turn lane, it's really, it's a deceleration lane. It doesn't really store traffic unlike a left-turn lane. So it wasn't really needed just because of the volume of traffic for right-turning movements? Was it at a high level that it would keep the flow of traffic that is heading westbound? The most important thing is to have an appropriate corner radius so that you don't have to stop to make the turn to come into the site. You need to slow down, but you don't have to, you know, essentially reduce your speed to an extent where you can slow down westbound traffic. So there wasn't, there wasn't a need to do that in terms of providing an additional lane.
Okay.
Board, anyone else?
I got a couple of small, it might be related or not. I know in today's age with electric cars, is there going to be any charging stations on the property? We tend to have space. We tend to have space available for that in the future. I don't believe the typical person's in the store for five minutes.
Correct.
I don't really see it as logical that someone's going to charge there.
Correct.
But I also want to be prepared to do it should the need arise.
And I didn't know if there's any mandates right now on a project like this where you have to.
I am not aware of that.
Okay. Just checking.
But we will be ready to with designated areas and underground pipes and prepared to do it. But if you want it, I'm saying.
I mean, as far as deals we are, I totally understand. Don't get me wrong, I don't have one. So to me, it doesn't matter. But you're making provisions for bicycles for employees. The employees might have an electric car, so they took the car, now they got no place to plug it in. So you're kind of doing one, but you're not doing the other. And that's another reason why I'm making a comment.
Very valid point.
Maybe for the employees more than any, you know, because you're right. People come in, they're in and out five minutes.
Yeah.
You don't want to do the jolly.
It just wasn't short. I didn't see it on here.
Good question.
The other question I have is on the Route 16 in and out entrance. Is that grade higher or lower than 16 because of water flow? You're not going to be discharging on the Route 16, are you?
It's graded where the water comes down and does not come out the entrance. It's graded, it comes over and goes into our water retention area.
Okay. Just want to make sure that. Because there's more than one area in town where water comes out of driveways and parking lots and goes under the road.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do have, we have bridges on both entrances, on Rydell Road and on Main Street, both for stormwater to make sure that, number one, we're not discharging anything on Route 16 or Rydell Road. We also don't want stuff coming into our site inundating our onsite stormwater basin and also for spill prevention measures that if by some chance there's a spill, you don't want oil coming down onto Route 16.
Because on your Rydell side, you're going to go down hillside, and on the Crown side, lower on the road. So will there be water coming from Rydell running into your place? Or you having stormwater there to stop it also?
So there's also a ridge on this entrance as well. Basically, it's going to come upgrade from Rydell Road, then taper back down to capture everything on our site. Keep Rydell Road's stormwater in their gutter on Rydell.
Okay. What about the snow removal? You know, were you.
This is my meeting.
We don't have a meeting where we don't talk about snow removal.
You know what, a tight site, right? And you got to find a hot fork.
In our current site, take everything and get it in one spot, forget about it.
I'm going to sit for this one.
Everything is going, all this area over here.
Okay.
Nice. It's going to be open and clear. I want granite curving angled where I slide right up, go over, and have all this area, we're going to have areas straight back, straight back, and straight over this way. I mean, no more turns with snow.
Yes.
It's.
Push it forward.
Push.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even with the landscaping designs, it's like you can't put a tree there, you can't put a tree there. I need to push.
Yep.
Awesome.
We want it beautiful, but yeah.
Ray can ask a question. Where is she?
She is right.
Where the circle is on the other plants.
It's kind of the same place it is now.
Yeah. Everyone's girlfriend.
I don't judge. May I make a comment also about the traffic in the entrances? I haven't talked to Jeff about this yet, but I've spent some time with John Furno and National Grid. National Grid had a great suggestion. It's just a lot of money. But one of the thoughts is to move the whole string of telephone poles to the other side of the street. And, yeah, I know.
Well, he does these zigzag back and forth.
Well, they'd go over and not just our lot, but maybe a few more down. And then instead of widening the road on the other side, it would have more room on our side. And if we did that, we might even have room to make that.
De-acceleration.
I don't want to have de-acceleration lane.
Like a queue lane coming down.
It's just, we talked about it, we're going to look at it. We're here to solve the traffic problems. So, and the other thing is, I personally like Jeff's idea on what to do on Rydell. But John is adamant, and I completely, whatever John wants. Take that pole out, not have anything there. We've heard that from everybody with the safety. So I think we're looking at doing all of that.
You still, I think you're still going to have an island there on Rydell.
Oh, yeah.
But you can't have, the pole's more of the.
I don't think they want an island. They want paint. They want a painted line.
No island.
Yeah. And again, plowing, you know.
Some painted lines would be good to start with.
You'll have your conformal lane.
Which one's left, which one's right?
Today, yeah.
Because Rydell's a wild, wild west.
But what Jeff did, and I mean, you know, took care of the left-turn lane, took care of a bunch of issues, we're probably going to take it one step further in solving these things.
Okay.
And to the chief of Ken, on the left-turn lanes, all you mark is on Route 16. That's just paint. There's no curves going in, none of that. Okay. Right, that's right, just paint.
All right, just to follow up on what Ray said, and Les' question. We have a lot of issues across the street, turning right coming from like the common area. It gets backed up because it's very congested inside the lot.
Right.
This seems, you're going to be able to turn right coming from downtown, and there's enough room to get into the lot and go about your business.
Cue it up.
It shouldn't be a cue right in the.
I don't.
A dangerous thing.
I wouldn't think that that would be needed.
Yeah.
I mean, you can keep on going, go to Rydell, and then shoot up Rydell, then turn.
Yeah.
And go as that big a way.
Yeah, if something was in the way. I thought there was a glare issue heading into town on that hill.
There is.
Big time.
Two o'clock.
Okay.
So we're certain. Westbound.
Will you be morning heading east?
I think, I thought it was evening.
You can get it both, you can get it both.
Yeah, about 2:30 when you come up the hill.
So I don't know what the distance is. Was that looked at at all?
I think he knows.
Oh.
Coming west?
Yeah.
At a certain time in the early afternoon? I mean, it's vicious. I mean, you've got a.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I'm amazed that there aren't wrecks there every day. But that's only a certain time of year, I think, it is.
It's only certain time of year.
Yeah, it's a small window in the year.
But as you're coming up the hill, what's the distance between the hill and the entrance of that driveway? For those timeframe?
You know, I think one of the things we can do is post a solar, you know, what, solar glare. There's standard signs that can be posted. So I think even if it's just, you know, a couple, certain weeks of the year that it happens, it's certainly not going to hurt to post some signs, just so people are aware of that.
Okay, and we also have a letter from John Furno from a concerned butter Joyce Kew, Main Street. She's asking that no parking signs be installed on the south side of the Main Street along her property.
Across the street.
Yeah, I mean, you've got plenty of parking now, so.
Yeah. It's the tractor trailers that will.
Pull over. Okay.
Right in front of the no parking sign.
Okay.
So I think this makes a lot of sense.
Okay, perfect.
Definitely do that.
All right.
What it is, is those guys are looking for a parking or something.
The pull-off route.
I mean, and I understand you have size restraints. But nobody makes space for the poor guy that's out of doing the work every day.
You don't want them running across the street either.
They will. But if you have the no parking. It happens every day, and I don't care. It happens on Route 12. It's seen every day, everywhere.
And 20.
Route 20.
Yeah.
They don't, it don't matter.
DPW now, and then they. They park at the highway department now. Highway.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we, they stop and ask, okay, if we pull in and get a coffee? And I think we have no problem with that.
They bring you back a free one.
And that's what.
They bring you back a free one.
Wish they would.
And I'll say this, and I've seen it, and I know it's all, it takes space. But if you ever go off Route 12 and 20 on like the main road, they actually have turnoffs so the truck can pull off. You're not going on, you're in your parking lot, but you're not on Route 20. But it's a pull off because they know that pull off or not, they're going to do it. So they've actually made those a pull off.
Yeah, still.
It's only designed for one. Don't get me wrong, one at a time.
Or five cars.
I'm just saying.
Five cars.
So you're agreeable to the signage.
I'm agreeable to whatever signage, traffic says and the other way the department says we'll do it.
Okay.
I just have a question about the lot on the east side. So along the roadway, there's kind of like an embankment currently up, sitting up there. Is that going to get leveled out at all? Because like right now during the winter, there's a weird snow effect that comes across that field and it builds up a big drift. I don't know if that's going to interfere with the sightline pulling out.
That's way over here and I don't think we were going near it. I don't think we were touching it. The berm next door?
Yeah, that berm there.
I don't think we're getting that close to that.
We're trying to keep the vegetation buck too, so that won't be affected.
Right, so as far as the sightline, I was saying.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Because even pulling out of Rydell, you have, that berm is in your sightline. So I don't know if there's, if that was considered, especially during the snow with embankments.
Oh, because it does curve a little bit there. So pulling out of the sight, I don't think that's in the, in an issue because it is set back a little. I mean, there's a sidewalk and everything there.
Can you see some topos there?
As far as sight distances go, we can also add sight triangles at the, at both curb cuts. Because I know there was actually a comment in the peer review regarding if the proposed pylon sign is going to be within, would be conflicting with our sight distances. So we could verify that.
Yeah, just because the way that that road bends, even when you, when you're trying to turn left out of Rydell, onto Main, that embankment is like a sightline issue. So I just don't know if that was.
Yeah, so it's ready.
We can take a look at that.
Yeah.
Or you can maybe grade it down because you're doing the basin, you're installing the basin right there. So maybe.
You can put the sign closer to the.
If it could be an issue.
Yeah, we were trying to leave it much natural.
It's all saying, yeah, it's all saying.
I'm not opposed to.
Because it is a field, so. There was a tree, one thing, I don't know.
Yeah.
Let's look at it.
Once we get our sight triangles on here, we can take a look to see where the limits are in this area to see what falls in there. Because I do, I agree, if this road's curving this way, there is going to be some type of sight distance in this area that might be affected. So we'll take a look at that. It's a good item to bring up that I was not aware of.
On the architecturals, is there a reason why it says Charlie's Convenience?
Free time.
It's not a joke. Is that a joke? They think your name's Charlie?
To change. Sam has a little daughter. How old?
Eight months.
Eight months, and her name is Charlie.
Oh, okay.
But we have no idea where they put Charlie's on there. And we keep telling them it's Family Convenience Center, and they fail.
Sounds like Sam's got an in over there.
Yeah.
We have no idea where that came from with the rod.
Well, Charlie says, remove it.
Okay. Do you want to run through the sticking points or the major issues from the peer review? If there's something that the board needs to give some direction on?
Sure. I'll quickly run through the very important ones. As you said, Adam, there's a lot of items on here.
Housekeeping, cleaning stuff, yeah. Yeah, let's skip that stuff, yeah.
Sure. So I guess the first thing, under General Comment, Sheet C3, the last comment, there is something on here. It's the discrepancy between the VanESSE conceptual improvement plan for relocating the guide pole. One of the reasons, I guess, one thing that we want to make clear, which Ray, you already, I think, made pretty clear, is that, you know, we started talking to National Grid, we started talking to the town regarding the pole relocations. What VanESSE did with the concept plan, I think it was mostly to try and keep what's existing, which I think they did a great job doing that as far as utility poles. Now it seems like the direction might be, we're going to get pretty involved in pretty much revamp utility pole locations. That's why the Rydell Road Island is probably going to go away. So there, I think, there will be some discrepancies between the conceptual plan, which it is just a conceptual plan, and what we're trying to get approved here. Regarding that, you know, later on, we are going to have to go with a full board design for drainage, roadway. There will definitely be a lot of Conservation Commission permitting for this as there is wetlands on this side of the road right near where it slopes down. So that's, I just wanted to make that.
Things on utility work.
On Sheet C5, please confirm that a fire hydrant is not required within the project site. We didn't receive any comments from the fire chief for this. I actually spoke with Matt earlier today, or was it yesterday?
Wasn't today.
Yeah, it's all, it's not today. It's all a blur. But we ended up just discussing the fact that I think we, or I'm going to have to get in contact with a few other town departments, both the police chief and fire chief. I didn't receive any comments. I don't want to assume that they have no issues with anything here.
We typically are comments ourselves too.
Do we request comments?
We do tech review. It's just, if we get things in writing, that doesn't seem to be the case so far. I love things in writing.
Oh, yeah. So that's what we usually did. We usually sent it around and then they would either email or handwrite their comments.
To every department.
Yeah, to each department.
We did tech review, got everyone in the same room, everyone a chance to weigh their comments and stuff, and been going kind of with those recommendations.
Yeah, we like.
I'd love to have it written.
Yeah, for the record. Yeah, for the applicant too. I mean.
Yeah. I think our answer is, we don't know if it's required or put it in.
Okay. Let's, could we request in writing what we typically had, like fire chief, police chief, border health, water sewer, highway?
Anyone who comes to tech review.
Yes. Thank you.
And we did receive a lot of very good feedback from, from most of the departments. It was just really those two that we hadn't received anything yet.
Yeah, okay.
Sheet C8, there was a question regarding if WB62 trucks will be making food and beverage deliveries. We have a truck turn figure that's in our site plan. We have a custom truck template that we use, which is based on a tanker truck from our experience, which is just a, no sleeper cab, just day cab with trailer of, I think it's 40 feet long. It might be long. It's in here, I can show it in a moment. But regardless, that's what we typically use and that's standard for most of the Dunkin deliveries. So we do not anticipate a WB62 truck entering the site. So for landscape plan, there is, the generator and propane tanks should be screened from view. That was one of the comments. That's behind the building, so it won't be screened from the building, from public view, from the road. Ray stated, you know, if you prefer landscaping around it, we can.
There was, just regarding landscaping, there was, I think in one of the early concepts, Ray, there was a lot of landscaping that was up front by the roadway. I would just be concerned regarding the sightline and the, just to, I think, even with small shrubs or something like that, that'd be ideal. But I, I don't, for the accessibility of the propane and stuff like that.
I think they're all here and the road starts here. So I mean, I.
Do you remember the early concept one that, that was like, there was a lot of trees and bushes out front? And it was like, wait a second.
Okay, I, yeah, we will absolutely, I mean, again, we are here to fix all those problems.
What, what was that?
Whether it's the trees and shrubs or the line of sight.
Oh, okay.
In the beginning, they had a tree. God, there's a plan along 16.
Trees and bushes.
He said, ah, you might want to pick them out of there. Do we have that in one of our?
No, with the last people.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So may I ask where, the propane tanks, not your building propane tanks, but the ones you sell.
Yes.
Where are they going to be? I'm trying to read this in the back. I know how your gas.
It's going to be up front. I forget where, but in front of the building in cages like I have now.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Proposed, it's right in an indentation at the end of the building.
Right here, yeah. We used to fill our own and do it. We have a service now.
We have Rhino.
So, you know, it'll just be re, we may have some bulk storage in back with our big tank.
Is there any other issues, whether there is?
Lighting.
Some lighting issues.
Yeah, there's light spillage into Main Street and Rydell Road at the curb cuts. That was done intentionally. I know the lighting companies typically like to show a little bit of spill over for safety reasons into the road. We can shield them and relocate, you know.
That's what the peer review is trying to.
Yeah, I think we just shield them.
Okay.
On the property.
That's fine.
So you don't want any light onto the Main Street? You want it, you really want it on property only?
Yeah, like.
I mean, a little bit of light on Rydell isn't going to hurt nothing.
Or Main.
Well, yeah.
I mean, there's no residential property.
It is only going to be lighting up the entire neighborhood.
Well, if there were houses, that would be a different story. But it's the fire station and then I, there's no development in the future across the street, on Main Street.
Then the same over Rydell.
It's all right.
I don't mind a little lighting out in the street.
On the streets, I'm not, it's just not to the east.
For the bicyclists.
Yeah.
At nighttime.
Yeah. And that's probably like that berm there. That shields him a lot from.
Okay. Where's your dumpster? Where's the dumpster?
The dumpsters are located back left corner.
Back left hand corner.
Yeah, on the back side.
Right over here.
So the truck will come in all the way around.
Just what they do now.
Yeah, right.
Straight in, go to the board, back up and.
To the chair, going way back to one of the original concepts here. I think it was brought up about the sidewalk along the 16?
Yeah, I remember that.
Not, there's nothing to connect it to, is there?
No. I think that was part of like the green communities thing.
Sounds like a complete street.
That kind of.
Yeah, complete streets, yeah.
Yeah.
No.
No.
No, it's dangerous.
Yeah. Making sure that we all remember and let it go, yeah.
Extension of existing sidewalks, sure, but there isn't one over there on either side?
Yeah, the sidewalk, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere.
Well, the closest one is across the street, which goes down to the, it, it stops before, before your business, your current business, right? Doesn't go all the way down to the interior of your business.
Sidewalk has that convenience.
You're looking at the old store, there's a sidewalk to the right, but not to the left.
Yep. And it doesn't go beyond that.
Right.
No, it doesn't. That's the end of it.
Yep. So yeah, there's no purpose of sidewalk.
No, there's no place to connect it to.
No.
I understand.
Sidewalk to nowhere, exactly.
I think that was pretty much it for the lighting and landscaping. Oh, one other item too. On the existing conditions plan, there's a 15-inch maple tree that's located right on the corner here. We didn't have anything on that tree saying it is to be removed, be protected if.
Except for the recommendation.
Recommendation.
We didn't have anything on our plan.
Oh, right, right. But you may implement.
Yeah, so the reason, so basically the peer reviewer is saying that it should be protected during construction. You know, if we don't have to touch it, which I don't, with these improvements, it shouldn't be an issue leaving it. The only concern might be when we're doing improvements to Rydell Road, that there's a good chance that's coming down. So.
If it's a sightline issue and stuff like that, that I'd rather lose the tree there.
If we can keep it, let's keep it. If it's in the way of getting the job done, they have to go.
Ready, you say it's historic.
If it's going to hit the pot truck, if it's going to hit the pot truck mirror.
Sightline's more important than anything.
Correct. That's what we care about.
Over any of that.
No, I know.
National Grid took like four trees down a year ago on this site and nobody cared now. One last.
Utilities.
One last fall in the road.
Yes, go for it, Matt.
Kind of let the board go, let them get to go.
Yeah, we got it.
I think you've already heard me talk about, Rob. One of the things I asked about was because we have stormwater basins in the front, and it's typical for planning boards to require some sort of fence, and I didn't want to see an ugly fence. All right. So we were talking about, I don't know, four-foot chain link fence up in front of the site, it's going to look awful. So if you guys come up with any sort of decorative or something to just prevent fall that you can talk to the board about?
Yeah, make sure that it's available.
Yeah, that is a very good point. We were, we did discuss a few options. I think, if I'm not mistaken, it was.
We talked about dressing it up with the split rail and plantings to hide it the best we can. We'd like to get the chain link down the slope as long as it, you know, an acceptable amount that doesn't interfere with the functionality so that it, even though there's four feet of protection, you may not see four feet so that it can be hidden. I don't know if that makes sense or.
So it'd be recessed more into the side slope to the basin, not too much because we don't want to.
He's not horribly deep, you know, at the same.
Yeah, so what's the depth on the basin? Can we change that so that there's no, there's no need for any protective?
I'm all about aesthetic here.
Yeah.
With safety.
Yeah.
Right, that's the point.
I think they're five feet deep. The other one, I think, is.
But can you just change the pitch? So gradually goes down and gradually goes back up?
Yeah, you can tumble in there, you'll be fine.
Yeah.
If that's acceptable, I mean.
Rather.
When we talked, I thought it was a requirement that these needed. I didn't really.
No.
Yeah, we can accommodate.
And then we could just do decorative shielding.
That's fine. I don't, I don't see a need for a chain link.
Right.
I'm glad everyone agrees.
Beautiful.
Yeah. Full safety with cosmetics in a case like this with both basins right out here. So the other thing I had mentioned, and I believe this could be for traffic engineers still with us. The egress onto Rydell, was there enough distance for cars to queue so that they're not backing up on the site? Or if someone's taking a right onto Rydell for whatever reason, they miss the entrance or whatever it is, you're not going to create any issues with it being behind the basin as opposed to being further back near the septic area? Was he, I guess what I'm asking is, was he okay with that location? I'd like to hear that from the traffic consultant.
Yep, he's here. Go ahead, Jeff.
So if you just repeat, I'm sorry, I could, I could hear you, but I just wanted to make it clear as to what you were asking.
Sure. The location of the egress onto Rydell, do you have any issues there with queuing of cars or stacking or anything that would prevent? Any issues whatsoever for traffic management?
No, in fact, the queuing, even though we had those delays, the queuing did not extend that to the point where it was blocking the driveway. The Saturday time period was a little bit further than it is on a weekday, so probably. And again, I think it has to do with the transfer station that the bike people, there's more activity, so the queue has to be a little longer during that time period. It could be, you know, to the extent that we want to make sure the intersection stays clear, consideration could be to provide the do not block markings. Again, it really seemed to be a Saturday situation more so than a weekday situation where we had the issue. But that's certainly an option is to put the do not block in.
I wouldn't do that on a roadway.
Right, so we're just confirming that that location is not problematic. We did see another variation where the driveway was towards the back. So as far as the direction of the intersection.
Further upright.
Further what?
Further upright.
Yes.
Yeah, that would make sense. Then.
So we just want to make sure that there's not going to be a conflict at that intersection with that driveway location.
Yeah, I mean, ideally they're aligned. If they, if they can't be aligned, I think the offset that we're talking about shouldn't create an issue because the conflict, if someone was turning left into that driveway, it's not interfering with our driveway. If our driveway's moved for their, if Route 16's running north-south, so if it's moved further west, I guess along Rydell, it shouldn't create a conflict with the turning. If they If they'd be offset enough, just given that they're opposite sides of the road, then it shouldn't pose any issue.
Any consideration in your study for a no-left turn out of Rydell? Is that something the board would even want to know?
No.
Okay, just checking. Alright.
You know, the stations, the cross. You go to the dump, then you go to the post office, then you go to the, you know.
I think, it's not a bad question, but I think one of the things that, is we talked about the delays trying to get out of Route 16, providing that is a, um, a safety valve or a capacity valve and allowing some of the people, if, if there's queuing trying to get out of the Route 16 driveway, allowing people to come out of the Rydell driveway does help to some extent. It just allows you to certainly.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if this is an opportunity to address an issue if it was an issue.
Okay.
Alright. Spill prevention.
Sure. Time to dive into spill.
My, my big thing with, with fueling stations and spill prevention is typically cross drains at points of egress. Because the slope generally slopes backwards, so if fuel, we're having unfortunate accident and leak out of one of the pumps, if someone had a problem, it's not gonna flow down the driveway and into the street, correct?
No, so the low point near the Main Street driveway is right here. There's a catch basin. So everything is, is flowing towards that basin.
Great.
There's a little bit of a cross slope here and then everything is sloping back.
Excellent.
So this is the high point. So in order for anything to go over that ridge, it would have to pool up and go over. Now.
Great.
Yeah, so that wouldn't be an issue. We have an off-site oil-water separator. This one I believe is 3,000 gallons. And that one's 4,000 gallons, but, um, regardless, it would end up going in, in, uh, being captured to that, um, structure.
Great. Perfect.
Okay, I wanna, I just want to add to this. I mean, many of you know, we had a release, a spill, excuse me, 146 gallons of gas, and I have about $140,000 into that cleanup. So I have spilled religion. So I would like, you and I, when this is graded with the hose, I mean, seriously, this, and this has to be contained. It's, it's absolutely imperative that this drain properly. Now, I have a cross drain where we are now, and all it does is collect dirt and grow little plants out of it. They're horrible. But, but if that could save a spill, I'm all for it, but, you know, I, I'm, I don't believe it's going to here.
Great.
I'm gonna say, there is one of those cross drains. The biggest mistake ever made in the world is those cross drains. They're garbage, they don't work. You're better off with double drains, double manholes than you are cross drains.
Alright. Everybody has their opinion. Um, board, yeah.
Just one last question. Uh, Ray, you currently have in, in your current location, you have like picnic tables and stuff like that. Do you have a site where you, okay.
Patio right here.
That's what I thought.
So, uh, ice cream will have some indoor seating.
Yep.
It will have two walk-up windows. And a big patio area, also completely surrounded by bollards for safety. Similar to what we have now, bigger, nicer.
Do you have a canopy over that? Coming out?
I got a big canopy right here.
No, no, what's good is at least it's not on that side where it gets hot. It's on the opposite side.
You're right. The side it's on now, but so it is on the, the evening shade.
You get your ice cream, it disappears.
Do you need a crosswalk for the fire department too?
Can I just talk one more time about Rydell?
Get me a golf cart so I can go across.
Taking the post out, taking the island out and all that. I've seen people, we've all seen people do crazy things. And if there's nothing there and it's covered in snow and whatever, people are gonna come in and cut across and I just think that unless you tell people, and, you know, people are not very instructional unless there's some graphic or physical thing to keep them on one side. Over on Cedar Street, you go towards Wollam Lake, there's a little island there. I got pulled over once. I went on the wrong side. I mean, it happens. People, like when you're not.
So if there's no island, you can't get a bollard.
No, no, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying that people, it isn't about me, it's about.
There's two ways in, two ways out over there.
But, but I think it needs to be thought about. I don't think we could just say, you know.
I, I mean.
Head-on collisions or whatever.
No different than any other rodent section.
It's just because it's a change. It's gonna look different, that's why.
But it's just so large and it's not so, you know.
It's nice and spacious.
Plenty of room.
Alright, go ahead. You know what they make.
You have a tee there.
They, they do make those islands. It's all the rip.
They're probably gonna move the pole.
That's still low to the grade.
They're moving the pole anyways.
Even if it was a pylon that's, you know, was there.
No, no pylon.
You know, or something. That's a breakaway.
What we're hearing is that they're gonna be really seriously looking to relocate it.
Improve that section.
So.
I know.
Most likely.
But people see the telephone pole, they kind of figure it's one side or the other.
They made the improvement at the blinking light, you know, coming from Webster, and my understanding is that's working pretty well, and I think.
Yeah.
There was no man's land over there.
Yeah.
John, John's comment to me was, if we could kind of do that.
Yep.
It works well, so.
Yep, that's good.
Whatever the town decides that the best way.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just bringing it up. People are all over the place sometimes.
Okay, Matt, what's that?
Good drawings.
Yeah, really good.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience, we lost the only other person, so. You ready to continue?
Yeah.
Are you wanting approval?
If you're willing. Yeah, I think continuation would be fantastic. As far as moving forward, we're gonna address all the comments in the, um, comment, in the, um, peer review letter.
Right.
We have Conservation Commission, uh, in a week from Monday.
Yeah, February, right. No?
No.
Never mind.
Nope, January 24th, right?
Are you gonna be ready?
It was in the paper. I saw it myself.
This is a very sore subject.
I, I understand. I don't like breaking people's hearts.
No, absolutely.
But I also don't want any issues.
It was, uh, in the paper, January 12th, so that was.
Okay, so we have two con, yeah, so the 24th, and then we also have a ConCom meeting on the 7th, February 7th. And then we have Planning Board on the 10th.
Yep.
So, would you like to continue to the 10th, February 10th?
Do we need to continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just to again.
In case there's a need.
Especially the TSSs and the Hydra CAD issues.
ConCom has any recommendations and the plans have to change.
Yeah, so the plans are gonna be revised. We're gonna present in front of ConCom. Then you're going to revise them again, tweak them again on the 7th. We should be able to get approval on the 7th, and then you come to us with your final plan.
And we show department comments, one way or the other, on there.
Have comments from all the departments and everything else.